First item is, are there additions or modifications to the agenda? No information on IMC. Do you address that?
Yes, and I will.
Okay. Want to get to IMC? Okay. And the resolution sixteen seventeen dash two now included in the packet.
That's the one on the, taking the ordinance on narrow one or two.
Is there a modification to that?
That is the resolution to send it to the public.
Oh, I see, okay. That's under number six. And then the report from Deputy Tom Barber.
His report is in?
Yes, his report's in here, yeah.
It wasn't in my original.
Okay, I saw it. Okay, do we have any comments or presentations from the public? Now we'll go on to staff reports. Our new city administrator will start us off.
I want to bring up today on what, having most of this is very short, I'll hold it a little bit longer, but it's just because I'm new, because of all the things going on, I'd like to help you review the last four weeks. We discovered, and I think it's no secret, that it's very difficult for staff to make any web page changes at all. It's difficult to the point that we don't want to be there. So you'll see that agendas, audits, and budgets are not as good as they're very difficult getting there. I've been working with a couple firms to see what we might do when we're budgeted for next year, hoping I'd be able to do what it might cost. One of the things they asked was, why don't you give us a list of the city websites that you like, the ones that you don't like, and why? And what do you want to do with it? Tom, working on that, it's a work in progress. And we won't see anything on until next July first, assuming we can afford it, in which case we put it in the local's budget in spring. Status of the audit is more or less on hold because of a variety of challenges. The backlog of general entries, of bank thread facilitiations, of all types of adjustments that have to be made, right now can only really be made by Kathleen and Sarah, so it's an expensive process. And we're not really able to do anything independent of them because they're experts in that system. I've got a meeting on that system in a few minutes. But Sarah will be here to be favorable on Wednesday. Kathleen is out this week. But there's been a fair amount of work done, but there's a lot that needs to be done. And so we can't do anything more with the audit until we actually close the books as of last June thirty, if they're not closed. And that impacts us in many ways, and I'll be explaining that a little bit more later. Financial system upgrade is not yet an upgrade. We have, as about twelve-thirty this morning, we restored to sell Clarity. And I'll get into more of the details in a few minutes. But with that Clarity, we didn't have it for three days last week, which means we could not process anything. And so there's a larger backlog of unpaid receipts, a larger backlog of vendors who hadn't been paid. We're starting to work on that, but we were not able to upgrade to Casell Connect. And I'll talk more about that in a couple of minutes. There's issues with, not issues. There's some things I've done with budget familiarity, and I'm going to present briefly if you would like me to. A couple of things having to do with the budget. There's some adjustments that have to be made with the budget. And I've also got budget to actual reports. I'd like to give you a format that I'd like to use, but I'd like to comment on if it's a good format or not. I'd like to do that at our next meeting also. Regarding personnel, there's, as in so many areas, there's a lot of backlog work. We have ordinance that is dated with regard to personnel, and especially with some benefits. The handbook pretty much brings that up to date, but the handbook itself, in my estimation, can't modify an ordinance. And the handbook does not include retirement, has other issues relatively minor that I'm going to be working on upgrading handbook to you, perhaps directly ordinance, to repeal the old one and to make a new one accept or to take in the handbook as it needs to be modified. But that's a work in progress also. The other issues are sub-issues and retirement issues, and I think they know about those. And I'm going to try and tie all those up, like, September board meeting, and have something to present to you on that. On the other side of these, those are self-explanatory. What I'll try and do is make sure you know if you're going to be here or may not be here as much in advance as possible. That's the current plan, the ABC and the activities. It's more information than anything else. The hours at City Hall, we modify it a week ago today or two weeks ago today. I thought it was unfortunate that there would be a half an hour break at lunch, not a lot of people come in, and so we don't do that anymore, as long as there's two of us here. And we open up at eight o'clock, not at eight-thirty, and we're open through lunch. And so it's an eight to four-thirty open time for the City Hall. And already that's seen a major difference, we have people here who are not turning away until twelve or twelve-thirty because we're open. And so, I mean, I'd rather take lunch, of course, we said it's required to by federal state law, but we do modify our lunch, just so that one of us is always here. Payroll and payables. Right now, for example, we pay payroll on, we process payroll on Wednesday. However, we're processing that payroll for two days that haven't been worked yet. That's not a good idea. Generally, you want payroll to be reflected on work that has already been completed. Although there's not a legal term that I've ever seen for, I call it a gift of fucking funds. Anytime you front load something, for example, the New Year, you give everybody eighty hours of sick time, where they've been accruing it, so many hours per month over twelve months, is anticipating that they'll be there and will use it as necessary. I personally experienced somebody who's got a fair amount of front-end pay and benefits, and within a couple days, essentially, you'd have to write it off. So one payroll sometime in the future will be at most three to five days later than normal, and then the rest of the payroll will roll along that way, but the pay will be for work that has been completed, as of the date that the payroll has been processed. It's a relatively minor thing in our case, because when we comp, we're talking about a couple of things a week. But it's much cleaner, because the work has been completed, rather than anticipated to have been completed. We've begun processing this year's payables. However, we lost three days, and we probably have fifty to sixty payables that have to be processed, and we'll start doing that early tomorrow morning. We were unable to do it on one of these orders, if it's the last year's payables or this year's payables, because last year it hasn't been closed. On a cash basis, that's less important, because when you pay for it, then that's when it's going to be booked, not necessarily when the expense actually occurred. And one of the things I will bring to you soon is a, basically, a revolution to return to a modified accrual basis accounting, rather than modified cash basis, which conforms to all the standard accounting methods that are used in school districts and counties and cities for the most part. That takes care of that. So that's the big issue again. That's not insignificant, but talking to the auditors and Kathleen, who's very good at a lot of this, we just figured, since we haven't closed last year, and we're still in between years, we're almost near twilight, it's only been two fiscal years, why not just go back to modified accrual basis? But I believe that you formally approved the move to modified cash basis, which means it must be brought back to you, and that would be my intent, hopefully, at this September meeting.
So we could do that in, start July first? We could do it in September?
That's my attempt, because we're so backlogged back in the June, that we could do that. If it looks like it's going to cause considerable problem and difficulty, then we'll wait until the end of this year, another year in June thirty of two thousand seventeen. I'd rather not. And if you'll allow me to give a little demonstration on how I'd like to give reports, because one of your tasks to me was to give you monthly and quarterly budget to actual reports, and I can't do that yet, because we have, again, a year that hasn't been closed and a year that really, not formally opened, but I can show you the format I'd like to use, and I'd like to get your comments. You'll see that it's a problem now to have invoice dated June third. It's probably last year's expense, but when you pay it on August fifteenth, for example, it's this year's expense, and it creates a lot of difficulty with the budget when you're on a cash basis. Normally, it's less of an issue as of June thirty, because you process more of most things, but not necessarily always. Usually, on a modified accrual basis, you have two extra accounting months, July and August, that belong to the prior year, so that everything that actually occurred in that year is expensive in that year, as opposed to the year that you're now in. And that's the normal accounting way of doing things, and that's what we like to do. But I'll bring that back to you formally later. Before I get to my last issue, the monthly and quarterly financial reports, which we'll record early, I told this thing out, showed you the bundle. It shouldn't take long, and if you'd better with me, I think it would be a template and a format. And the only reason I put it up there, because I can point out a couple things to you, as opposed to explaining it to you right, as you've got it in front of you. But before I do that, are there any questions on any of the things I've talked about so far?
David, will you talk about the executed agreements and contracts?
Yeah, what I tend to do is, those are, I've got one for the, first one for the water, actually, was just the purchase of equipment, I misread it. But what I'm doing, for example, is regardless of the size, you want to sit down up there?
Because Ken's got the projector.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's fine, I didn't think about that.
You can come to it.
Yes. Again, this is typically the way I've done it in the past. These numbers are all real, but they, this one is, tends to be revenue, the next one tends to be expenses. Unfortunately, they're in different gears, but that's not important, because this isn't a real report. I just wonder if you feel for the format. So for example, I call it budget to actual report, this is revenue, this is a general fund overlay. And normally, we could do it for the major funds, a water fund, a wastewater fund, streets fund, maybe one or two other. The others might be done like this, in some funds on a quarterly basis, but that would be their call. Certainly, the general fund, although it's a long way from the largest fund we've got, is the one that takes care of most administrative expenses that can't be identified to a specific fund. So revenue looks something like this, and here's your adopted budget, and so you, this totals a five-hundred-and-thirty-seven-thousand budget. And then what I'll do is show you the month's receipt for the month that has just closed. Now again, these numbers are real, but they're not real in which year they're in. This is just to give you an example of a template. But this is actually a good number here, we budgeted a hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand dollars for the last year, and we received a hundred-and-thirty-eight. We're forecasting will be a hundred-and-thirty-eight, although on a cash basis, you really can't do that, because we could get some other cash in. And so it would be a positive variance. And I will do that with all revenue accounts, again, this is the general fund overlay. And it would simply say something like, the power franchise, we budgeted fifty-five-thousand, we received fifty-six-thousand-eight-hundred, that's a positive eighteen-hundred. The gas franchise, we budgeted eighteen-thousand-eight-hundred, we received this, that's a negative number. When I do this in colors, all the negative numbers will be in red. The bottom line then says, we have budgeted a total of, not revenue, but resources. Revenue fund balance is not the revenue, it's a resource, and it's what you bring into the fiscal year, when you start that fiscal year. So you said you're going to have five-hundred-and-thirty-seven-thousand. The June receipts were four-hundred-nineteen-thousand, and again, these numbers are not for lots of reasons. What you'll see, the audit is done for fiscal year sixteen, the year that just closed, but the year in forecast of this, and if it were to be that, that would be about a hundred-and-seventy-three-thousand dollars positive. And I can never emphasize enough the importance of this number. That's what you bring into the year with you. And it's not unusual, in lots of places, to see this declining year after year, especially in a school district, in which, in order to keep their teaching staff and everything, if they put a lot of money in here, they can go for a year or two in bad times and still keep at least most of their staff. But whatever you might need the money for in the next year, this is very important, but it's not revenue. These are your revenue items. This is your, this is your cash you brought into the year, so this is your total. You see, this would be a fairly good picture. And what I'd like to do is give you a picture like this for the major funds. Most of it, if we did it monthly or quarterly, would be a five-minute review at each board meetings, or at each council meeting, something like that, with maybe a quarterly presentation and a little bit of analysis. For example, if you had miscellaneous revenue, well, let's say this was thirty-thousand dollars, and your receipts, and notice, this is a negative number, and have a good reason as to ask, how could you have negative receipts? Well, something was recorded incorrectly in a previous month, and you corrected it. And you could say, these were bigger numbers, that you estimated thirty-thousand, and you actually had a negative sixty-five-thousand. I should have a reason for you for that to happen. So we kind of look at these in relative sizes and say, what are incidental? Telephone franchises incidental. Some of these others might not be especially good in one year. So the first thing I'd show you would be the revenue and resources. It's a total amount that we have to work with. And forget that this says payroll, that's not, this is good. So what we've done here then is, you notice, we're talking fiscal year sixteen, and this is fiscal year seventeen, because I have no way right now to show you last year's revenue against last year's expenses, or this year's against this year's. So just in the interest of showing you probably the way I'd like to present it, but of course I'll do it any way you want. And say, okay, here's what was budgeted, here's the July expenses. And then this becomes really important. We pay twenty-four times a year. On a straight-line forecasting basis, I would simply say thirty-one fifteen times twenty-four, it's not that simple, but it would be about this number, and we'd end up with a budget of this, with a final year forecast of this, and we'd be good on those expenses to the tune of seventeen-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars. What you should normally see in a year then is, from conservative budgeting, that most of your expenses, for whatever reason, are budgeted a little high, simply because you don't know those expenses that are going to hit the books that you didn't budget at all. And so those ones that you can estimate and get a little high, you try to do that. And notice that the office manager is completely different, and I can't give you an explanation for that, other than in the general fund, this is all that was budgeted, and this is what the year in forecast is, if you base this on twelve months, twelve-hundred dollars a month. And this might be as simple as somebody who has spread over multiple funds, being budgeted in one place, but actually being charged differently from the way the original budget set up. So for me, this would be a question mark. And when we do that, then you're looking basically at the five classifications of the six people we have. The health insurance, FICA taxes, and retirement expenses are all shown. And then what I would say is, here's the subtotal of wages and salaries, and you can see that if this were to be realized, then you'd have a right to expect every month, that I'd show you what was happening, a quarterly review, and if this continued like this, that the wages and salaries would overrun the budget by about eight-thousand-eight-hundred. On the other hand, the subtotal of what I call associated payroll costs, benefits, essentially, should under run by about seventeen-thousand-three-sixty. So the total payroll expenses would be about eighty-thousand, eight-thousand-five-hundred in the good. So I break it down by payroll, I break it down by all other expenses, most of, you will recognize, most of these, and I continue it on down, and sorry, this all doesn't fit.
But David, over time, these numbers, what we will expect this year in forecast variance to be, pretty minimal.
Not necessarily, but in most of them, yes. I mean, if you're budgeting, especially as you get more into budgeting, and especially me, I get the history of how we budgeted and how we continue to budget, you would expect variances to not be great. I'd say at some sub-level, total other expenses, I wouldn't expect that to be more than five or seven-and-a-half percent, either high or low, as you get into it. But my big question here is, does this begin to solve the issue of budget to actuals? In other words, you've got a thousand-dollar budget, you have a forecast of twelve-hundred dollars at year end, and it looks like if things continue to be spread in the future like they were in the past, that we'll overrun that account. And that's all it is, and I'm an appropriation, though we will overrun that account by two-hundred dollars. I've assumed in doing something like this for demonstration purposes, that that's pretty much what you'd like to see.
I do. That is what I would like to see.
The only question I have is, are we going to be able to build that with our current financial system?
Yes. That's okay.
Yeah, everything, I, I. I was hoping that you didn't have to regenerate this by hand, that you could go into the Casell.
Casell will do all of this. Yeah, no, this, this was done in Excel, of course. But that's for demonstration purposes. Once we're up, it's all done. And I mean, the last thing you want to do is do it here, and then do it all over again here. I'm not interested in doing that very much.
Because I did see a report that had been generated as a test run.
Yes. And we just have to get there, that's why getting Casell up and operating is so important. So that's that. And if that's okay, I'll go ahead, but there's something, and then we go through the fiscal year, if you want modifications or anything, then I will give you. It's basically looking at the budget, what happened last month at a quarterly, what's happened in the quarter, and the forecast, and just like I tell, it's this number, and here's the year-end variance for the accounts, for the subtotal of the services accounts, and then for the credit fund.
David, because he's taking that, can we set that down? The projector needs to come with it. I'll be right there, I'll lift his camera, and we'll be able to see him there.
I have one other issue I'd like to bring up. I want to mention later, if we can, this thing. I'd like to talk about the local government investment accrual. But that's the end of my.
Can I ask a couple questions? The Zion, that's a water.
That wasn't agreement, that was a pursuit agreement. There was error in there.
And then Ken Cartwright is?
Ken Cartwright is in agreement, he and I talked about that, so he was in writing.
And Department of Transportation is for?
That's a, that's the, we've had with them, the cooperative emergency response.
Emergency response.
It's cooperative emergency response amongst all the counties and cities. So if something happened, there's no cost to us or anything, but we agree that if something happened in the state, and we could afford to do it, we would assist them and vice versa. We've had that for some time, and then the department relaxed. So there was no cost to that, and they've improved that. And the call is, is the planning with Linda Brosman now, rather than a former man, I forgot his name. Jim Jones, yeah.
Very good, thank you.
I thought Tom was going to be here tonight, but you had him, of course. Does anybody want to go over that? I have no questions about it.
What he told me before he took off was, it was nothing, although you will see traffic stops and violations, kind of an increase there. He has been using a different vehicle.
That was bad.
Yeah, well, that, and the, also, the traffic team's been kind of out in this area working, so they've done that. The only other item was with the National Night Out, it was a big success, although the city is going to have to play a little bit more of a role in it. It's actually, the National Night Out is a community event, not a Sheriff's Department event, so he'll talk more to that, but we'll have to work on getting the donations and everything, and putting, as far as the displays from the Sheriff's Department, they will be able to arrange that. As far as everything else, and since we're in conjunction with our first Tuesday, it would fall more on the city. So that's where, that, but it will be assisting that, but we're going to have to take a larger lead in it. And that's all that we stood out.
Did they ever take care of that, your stock last month?
The homeless camp has moved, I've been talking to the ODOT, they're going to come out and look at it. They wanted to make sure it was their right of land, it's right in the middle of the interchange, so they've come out, they've loaded that, and it looks like they're going to pull some signs in that. But the homeless camp moved out alone, they went up there with the deputy and public works, they went up and cleaned up some other junk that was left there. It's all cleaned up now.
Or it wasn't, or it was?
You wouldn't see it unless you were hitting on, going westbound.
Down here?
Yeah, and it was back up under Mead Trees back there. It's all gone now, it's all cleaned up. ODOT is going to monitor the situation too, but they look like they were going to put their signage up for no campaign or anything like that.
Are you going to be talking to him from down the next room? Would you ask him about the possibility of a crosswalk between, and I know it's the campus road, between the Woodnickel and this corner on this side? Because the parking lot's right here, really, and there, I've never seen anybody go from the Woodnickel across, over, and back. And I mean, there was two kids with a parent, and I was behind that crosswalk, and I pulled out there, and just about hit him. Because there's cars there, and there's no designated crosswalk there. So I don't, you probably, when you come from across the street to your place, I've got a few, go a block over, come up and go down. So I don't know, if we could get maybe another crosswalk.
We'd have, yeah, Marion County would have.
Right, if you could get a look into that, that's, I think it's busy, well, school kids is the other side, but it's really busy from those businesses.
I will mention that to him.
They expect school kids to be wanted for stop.
Right, I see a flag, and appear they have a flag.
Right, on the south side of the intersection.
Yeah, but I know for all these businesses, maybe you could just look into that.
Although you're supposed to treat all, all intersectional.
You're pushing handles.
But I think it'd just be another physical, you know, visual indicator that there's people crossing.
I will mention that to him.
We have a question for somebody.
I have a question, and I was going to try to get in and talk to Lisa and ask, have you had any other reports of people getting sick from the night out food, from the food that we had at the night out? I was just curious. My son got really, really sick, so, from something he ate there. And I think it was one of the macaroni salads. And it was a store-bought macaroni salad, so.
They were all refrigerated, though.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I definitely were all refrigerated, but I do know Reese's, and a couple of months ago, had a batch of bad macaroni salad. and a couple of months ago had a batch of bad macaroni salad.
No, that's first-
Okay, I just wondered if anybody else did, so, okay, thank you.
Okay, Alan, you're up next.
Uh, this month, I turned my report into the new city administrator, David, and he kind of incorporated my report into his. Just let you know that subdivision's going along nice and smooth, we haven't had any problems. Inspections have all passed, so that's about the highlight that is keeping us busy over, over public works.
Is he got a new shirt?
Yeah, I've had this for, I've had this for a while, but I might wear a collared shirt to a meeting, you know, once in a while.
I just have a question, and that, kind of what I was going to ask, now that we're moving to the administrator, which is our point of contact, is it appropriate to not require staff to come to these now unless there's a special issue or need? Because I think, like Alan said, a lot of what you said incorporated his stuff. And we didn't have that before, so we had each department person coming in, but now that we have a central point of contact, I hate to tie up, you know, an hour of their time or two hours for three to five minutes.
I think if it's ordinary day-to-day stuff, as I get more familiar with stuff, that's what I mean. If I get more familiar with it, I think it's unnecessary. If there's something that requires in-depth explanation, for example, water rights, I might want to run over water rights.
Oh, absolutely, right.
I might hit upon it in my city management report, but then he could follow up with more details. I think the other time that he should be here is when we start pumping budget and go all the way to, he gets involved in it. But other than that, when we don't need staff, I recommend that we don't have staff and I have to see that they're there when we do need them.
Very good, perfect.
That's okay. We have a new attorney this season. Nick, what would be your last name?
Heneman.
Heneman, that's easy enough. And so he's going to help us out with this resolution, that we're going to recommend to the voters. So that's our next item. Resolution sixteen seventeen dash two, referring ordinance number seven twenty-five to the voters. Deals with the marijuana business. Do you have any caveats that we deal with?
The short of it is, you have a resolution, passed ordinance in December, and that needs to be referred to the voters for their approval or denial. And that's what the resolution does. It's to be looking at the, whereas paragraph first one sets out what it would be prohibiting, and says there's a general election on November eighth. Then the next piece refers to ordinance number seven twenty-five. It was passed on December fourteenth, twenty fifteen. And that's being referred to the voters on November eighth. Then the next one is directing the city administrator to use the Secretary of State manual that sets forth all of the steps to make sure that it's done properly. Make sure that the public has noticed of that ballot title, and has a chance to inspect it, challenge it, so forth, so they have their due process opportunity there. And then the actual action they'd be taking is under the, now this, sublimity, city council resolves as follows. Talks about the measure, ballot title, delegated to the administrator, the notice of the ballot title, and right to appeal. And then finally, the elections office, section five, the act of election precincts, which precincts it applies to. And then there's an explanatory statement, as it said, B, and the effective date is to, the resolution is effective upon adoption. And I'm happy to answer any questions there, but the short of it is, you're referring ordinance number seven twenty-five to the voters for their approval or denial on November eighth election. In form of the state law.
What's the deadline to get this in?
The deadline is the eighteenth, I believe it's the eighteenth, I have to double check that. So it's after tonight, it'll get published in the, whatever, newspaper, general circulation is. It's no, public notice, they would have a chance to review it, appeal it if it's so is, and then it'll be sent over to the elections office. And those dates are set in that Secretary of State's manual, and I'd give you those dates if you would like to copy that.
Okay, thank you.
So that's enough time to get the state appropriate that.
So, somebody, anybody have questions? They'll go enter a motion.
I'll make a motion that we adopt resolution sixteen seventeen dash two. Resolution referring a measure to the sublimity voters asking if ordinance number seven twenty-five should be permanent, setting a ballot title.
So, I have a question. So if we get it to the paper by Wednesday, it gets out in the paper on Wednesday, if that's the tenth that we did, if it doesn't make Wednesday's paper, it's out on the seventeenth, and it has to be in by the eighteenth. Is there, are we kind of kind of close, or?
We'll have time, the notice needs to be already.
Okay.
So we, we're still, we're still within bounds.
Okay.
Move the motion on the second of the, is there a second of the?
Second.
Then move the second that we adopt this resolution, referring ordinance number seven twenty-five to the voters. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion carries. We're on to the minutes of the July eleventh council meeting. We have them in front of you. And are there any additions or corrections?
Just spelling my last name again.
I think that's right. You what? I don't spell my last name correctly. I already have a long code.
I'll even take this one, you're not going to put that on your desk.
I'll get it next time.
That's okay.
You want a motion? Yeah, we want a motion, would we? Still have it.
Make a motion that we accept the council minutes of the July eleventh, or, yeah, eleven, two thousand sixteen meeting as presented. With the spelling correction of one name.
The what?
With the correction of, uh-
Oh, it was his correction, okay.
Just my last name, he just has to-
You get two Fs or what?
Two Fs, one N.
Okay. Somebody's taking root about that. Second. Yeah, move the second, they're way about to approve the council meeting minutes for July eleventh, two thousand sixteen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Can I just question, David, about the, the hiring of Cartwright? Have you given that?
That's been done.
How, can you just explain a little bit how that went on, as far as that?
Yeah, we posted it.
Didn't we get any?
We got just one. We posted it on our webpage, we posted it right out here, we posted it on YouTube. We defined the position objectively.
No papers, no, no print?
No, the problem is we have a weekly paper here, and-
Well, the statesman has a daily paper. But that's okay, right, go ahead.
But is that, is that considered to be a local paper?
Yes. It does have to be a general circulation.
General circulation, yeah. And I'm not familiar with it.
And how long, so how long did we open that?
Oh, it's a week and a half. And we waited until the Monday after it closed, and interviewed, um, Ben. And I interviewed, and you know, qualifications, so we are going to start the next, next year, I believe.
Well, that, that was not my intent when I said we needed to post that and give people time. I mean, it's here or there, it's done, but I hope in the future we would follow some kind of standard more than just a week on the webpage and all frontier.
Well, yes, and we will, but in this case, um-
Again, fires, I'm not, I'm not interested in putting on fires, it's not going to be thoroughly within how the city operates. We're better safe than sorry, I'll just leave it at that. But I appreciate it, I mean, I appreciate what you did.
I mean, everything's done, we hired people for fifty years, it was a short term around. Because of the basic requirements they had to sign by September. But normally, it'll be posted for thirty days, and it'll be done just like the phone, that should be done.
All right, thank you.
And will that be part of the, the employee handbook? Don't put that kind of stuff-
Well, it's not, and I went to the handbook this weekend, and of course, you can see everything. If there's not a chapter or at least something that describes the hiring process, then you need to put it in there. And I will.
And you got what cost index, what, because that wasn't budgeted, is that right, Gene? That was not, like you said, it's not a budgeted position?
No, it was not, well, it wasn't specifically budgeted, no.
But we have the fund stack.
Yes, yeah, that's not a general fund expenditure, of course, so that's, the general fund is one of the most stretched to be getting to handle here. Okay. The next item is approving the transfer of city funds from Columbia Bank to the local government investment pool. May I show you a couple of numbers, because you're going to do someone better when we put them up. Right now, Columbia Bank, we have about, varies every day, of course, and we have about three point five million dollars. And like anything, it's not quite this simple, but this will be in order to manage to, of what happens to us. So this is in Columbia Bank right now, so there's Columbia Bank. And we earn on that one half of one percent, or about eighteen hundred a year. Local government investment pool in Salem, part of the treasurer's office, takes investments from two hundred and forty-two cities, or better, about one hundred and ninety-seven school districts, thirty-nine, thirty-six counties, and all kinds of special districts, and invests it. They're professional investors for every city and school district that wants to do it. And they've been doing it for a long time. If we had, not necessarily all, but almost all of our money in the local government investment pool, and just in July, we would have not quite one percent. And this amount of investment per year is about thirty-one thousand seven hundred dollars. What I'd like to do is do what I've done for all the twenty-five years I've been in Oregon, is take your money, you can put it in the local government investment pool, they invest it. Now, they're investing hundreds of millions of dollars, as opposed to a couple million here, or a few hundred thousand there. Obviously, they have a much larger return, because they're professional investors, and they have a lot of money to invest. And then what happens is, we have payroll coming up, make a payroll of fifty thousand dollars. We simply call, it's all online, it's a simple phone call, we call the local government investment pool, and say, please transfer fifty thousand dollars from our account at the local government investment pool to Columbia Bank. Or whatever bank we choose, we could have payroll in one, and accounts pay in another, for example. But would you please transfer that, as long as you do that by one o'clock one day, it'll be done two days later, and the money's there. But all the rest of the money is residing in the local government investment pool, and making a great deal of money. At least compared, I mean, these are not big interest rates, but the difference between something that's almost one percent and one half of one percent is considerable. And so, what I'd like, and I only need minutes saying that you approve, you don't have to do a resolution or anything, I fill out several forms, and we arranged to do this, but the net result is, we're getting a whole lot more on our money, and it's just been coming upon me to make sure it's transferred into our checking account, so that accounts pay of our vendors and so forth, and our employees and anything else are paid in a timely manner, where we're making a whole lot more money. When you look at this, this is about twenty-three thousand dollars. And can we lose twenty-three thousand dollars that we're not otherwise collecting? Yes, and so what I'd like, is your permission to go ahead and fill out all these forms, and we have minutes of this meeting, I include that with appropriate signatures, and probably within six to eight weeks, we'll be in the local government investment pool as opposed to all of our money in Columbia Bank, which financially makes no sense at all. So that's basically what, what that particular version of the document says.
Is that guaranteed or anything?
No, it changes all the time. But it's always going to be one, one half of one percent. Essentially, what's happened, they've been, a year ago, they were only about point five five percent, so ten or eleven times what we were getting at Columbia Bank. It's been rising up, and so July of this year is about, well, so like you said, it was actually over nine tenths of one percent. But because they invest so much more money with everybody and their professional investments, they'll always make more than the local investment pool for us. But no, there's no guarantee there.
Now, we keep in how that Columbia Bank?
We have two accounts, essentially a money market and a checking account.
And how much does that cost? There was talk that that would be fairly spending.
The, the cost for one month was fourteen hundred dollars, which I don't understand at all. I'm meeting with the bank general manager, I guess, on, once we were, that bunch together, and I was kind of talking about things a little, because we shouldn't be paying more than a hundred or two hundred a month, in my opinion. But there are some statements that don't show that kind of charge, and there's others, and some of these persons noticed it, that we were paying over a thousand dollars a month, and miscellaneous charges, some of which I don't understand.
And let us know, once you find out, once you find out what those charges were.
There, some of them are just what you pay on the own bank write-off. Some of you process so many checks, or whatever it might be. Some of them I've not seen that kind of discrepancy before, I don't know what it is.
Is there a possibility of finding the bank that charges were much less than that, or?
Well, yeah, almost any bank I've ever worked at. But see, I'm not sure that that's fair, I've ever deposited that. I'm not sure that that's fair, because I don't understand the charges and how the account was set up in the first place. One of the charges of two hundred and fifty-three a month for several months has been some type of analysis. I don't know what that analysis is doing, I don't know who asked for it, I don't receive any separate analysis from that account. It may be happening, and that's why I haven't made a judgment on that at all. But obviously, we want to pay as dearly as possible to whomever, and make as much as possible on a fair amount of money. And three million dollars is a fair amount of money, and we should be making as much as we can.
And how much is it if we switch over, is there a cost associated with them, and we screen our?
Let me find out, there's a very tiny cost, because every, because you've got four or five hundred jurisdictions that are paying it. It's not much, they're not a for-profit organization at all, and they're part of a much bigger organization, the treasurer's office. They simply cover the cost, which for us would be, and it's not pro rata, in other words, the Salem Kaiser School District, for example, we pay considerably more than we would in cost, simply because of the transactions that go on there.
What kind of protection does that money have? I know it's very, you know, it's investment, so it's going to be volatile.
Oh, well, state, any state institution is very limited date. They're not going to be investing in anything risky, like what collapsed the housing market some time ago. It's stuff that is approved by the state treasurer, according to the statute. If you'd like more details, I'd be happy, but I, I mean, there's no mortgage to that securities, for example, which collapsed the market a few years ago. There's nothing like that, it's actually forbidden, it's what you want your children to be investing in, to be safe for their future. It's that conservative, but it's still a lot of money from professional investors, so they're going to make more than we can in our account. So it's okay, I'll go ahead and arrange for that.
Well, I would, I would recommend, well, you're going to meet with the bank.
Yes.
And then answer those questions, and then you'll see what the administrative costs are for this.
Yes.
Or else then just switch it over? I mean, that's fine, that's, but I'm just more, can we get September first, and then you'll give us all the information? And unless you guys, I mean, it's, I would just like to see what is, what the irregularities are in our current situation with it.
I can do that, can we review them, what you'd like me to find out?
And then what the interest rate, or what the cost is associated with the new screen that program? And then maybe any, maybe to Gene's- And then maybe any, maybe to Gene's question, are there any risks, what are those? Just so we have the risks, so it's clear that we know what those are? And probably not much, because there are a bunch of other cities in that, right?
Well, there's multiple government agencies that invest in that pool.
I, I don't know, unless you guys want to move it over, right? I don't know enough about it to...
I can, I can, I can hang those back, I mean, I'd rather wait a month, but if you'd like to... I mean, the risk, the risk is more modest than anywhere you're going to find, because of the state statute on what they can invest in. But I'm happy to do that, if you'd like.
Well, I just, I guess my point is, I'm happy...
Wait a month and... Well, what, if you can get that information, if you email it to us, and we can...
Take a look at it, sure.
Just give a, you know, let's see it by email, whether or not...
Public record, public, open, public meetings and transparency, recommend waiting to the next.
I, I guess my point is, I don't know enough to tell you whether that's okay or not, okay? For three point five million, I hate to just say do it, and then they want to find out that the stock market might down. I don't know, I don't have enough, I'm not an expert.
Well, not a month, won't be happening. Oh, no. Let's wait and see what we...
Can I ask a question? Is that possible? Please? I just wondered, you, you gave the July one, and then you stated something back that it was at one time point five five percent? What was the difference, when was the point zero, when was it point five five?
Probably, probably ten months ago.
Okay, so it's, has it been steadily increasing, or has it been increasing, decreasing, increasing, decreasing?
Well, I assume in September of two thousand and eight, it decreased rapidly.
Well, yeah, I know that, but what I'm saying is this, is this a steady incline?
I don't know, I'm just saying that that's, like our own savings and money market accounts, it doesn't go one direction forever, it responds to the market. But the last eight, ten months, it seems to be up a little each time. If there were something that hit the global economy tomorrow, that wouldn't be the case. It's still more than you'd be getting at a commercial bank now. And that's what I'm concerned with, but I didn't expect it to be one point two percent a month now.
This isn't the same one that hers is in, is it?
Her, no, hers is Stanholm, hers is another state agency that I...
Okay. Thank you.
The next item is land use development, the subdivision development, attachment aid. Yeah, I included that because this was before my time, I don't fully understand it. But I've, um, it seems to be an open item, in which, um, we requested some reimbursement that we have not received. And so I just included the email for your information, because I believe that the, um, current involvement involved has not paid this, uh, it's about three thousand dollars. And I know the council members are more knowledgeable than I am, but to me, this was an open item that I haven't been able to resolve, that I just don't have the history to go along with. And I know that councilors there, I think, the involvementists are certainly more knowledgeable than I am. And I just would like a recommendation of what I should do, just pay that difference? Or should we fumble through with the individual involvement? But that's about the extent of my knowledge.
Gene, what, what's the history of this thing?
Well, it fell back to when the came through, and, and because our current legal counsel was unable to, um, represent the city because of conflict of interest, because they had to go outside. And actually, the attorney, um, that was looking out for the protection of, of the city. So it, under all those, you know, and, and dealt with water rights and a couple other things. And then also, when we were looking at calling it up for review, um, and they didn't build for that, but... Basically, it was protection for the city, you know, they didn't have to fight or...
I realize that. My impression was that expenses, uh, that the city incurred with this were going to be billed to the developer.
Right, and that would have been for the planner and everything like that. This, there was other things that fell in this billing that he's being asked to pay for that were for the city, so... I, I was apparently the only one, and, and with what I was told, and what he presented, it was like, um, yeah, that he should be responsible for that, that was actually city cost. I mean, this was all part of this, you know? All the other things that went on for the planning and inspection work and everything like that with the outside technical service, he agreed and, and paid, so...
Well, Miss Jean, what, what did the city, on, on this you named it out, what did the city pay for that wasn't associated with that development? That you feel that he's not, because I think the mayor's saying the associated cost. I don't think, unless there's something that's outside of that.
I mean, he came, the one was for planning commission meeting for the subdivision, and a variance approval for basically a thousand dollars. And the second one was for the PC, our planning commission, the city council meetings regarding the zone change for nineteen hundred and forty-eight dollars ninety-six. You know, um, and there was another bill that where we did not, they were not billed, meaning the developer, for the December meeting regarding the council's consideration to call, call up those planning commissions' decision. So those were three things, and I, to me, it, it would have been just general, ordinary, day-to-day business that was being done. I mean, because it also, um, I'm trying to read back here, um... There was no land use attorney really needed for, for the actual decision, for the meeting, for the, they didn't participate, so...
But who, who asked it?
We didn't see.
No, but who, you said the city, who? There's got to be someone, who?
Don't look at me. It was because Steve Tabor had a conflict of interest, so we had to find an outside attorney to represent the city during this.
So, so it didn't sound like, it sounded like we did need an attorney? Because if Steve was saying we needed someone else...
I would recommend, to have the background of an attorney, to have Steve here before you make a decision on this. Randy?
And, and I, I don't deal with the money front of it, but generally, you go for the planner, engineer, architect. But I think Alan's time during those meetings, as is the city administrators, as is the city attorneys, is the city's cost. Am I not mistaken on that? I mean...
In the past, I don't believe that was the case, but I mean...
It doesn't line item out for city staff, but we couldn't have Steve here. And sure enough, if we had that representation, something would have shot us in the throat. And the cost is more, and we should be very thankful for the agreement we have with Tabor Associates. But we, that, because of that, it's a kind of a one-time thing. But I don't know if we itemed out the time that Steve spent on something and attributed that to the cost or not, because I don't know.
Actually, the attorney did do anything, they, they were here, but they didn't have, you know...
Well, but they sent us a bill. So, whether they're...
He did, he was very helpful.
Yeah.
I mean, he, he wasn't just sitting there, I asked him his opinion, and he gave a valid opinion, and I think he helped clarify a lot of things. So I think he did do something.
So typically, um, like in this situation, where the planning commissioner was talking about the, the development, I was under the impression that the attorney fees are a flow-through situation, a flow-through item, is that typically not the case?
I, I don't know, they pay a fee upfront and agree to pay any associated cost, but I don't know if the attorney fee has been included in anything, apart from that, other than it's the cost to do a business. But I, I don't know, I suspect records could, you're going to have to go back a long ways to our last subdivision.
But that's what you're commenting, you remember in Steve Tabor's comment?
Yeah.
When he said it was a flow-through?
Yeah, that's what I...
But that's why I'm, I'm wondering, you know, since the bill's already been paid to the attorney, so now it's just an in-house thing, if you'd wait for maybe Steve Tabor's opinion, or his take on...
I don't think these two have been paid yet, I think these...
Yeah, they've been paid, it's just where they've been generally entered out of. They haven't been paid by the developer, but the city has paid the developer.
But I, going back, I do not believe we've ever had paid for attorneys, or we've never had the developer pay for these attorney fees.
Ah, I'm, I'm a little bit, I might take an opinion on that. I think, uh, my understanding was that if you have a development out there, the developer pays for it.
Well, that, associated cost, that would fall under that definition, well, that's an associated cost.
I thought that's how it was described to us.
That's what it was described to me. And that may be the way it is, I don't like saying I haven't seen...
Well, do we want to wait for maybe Steve or Nick, did you give us that?
I'm going to refrain from commenting on it, because if there's still a conflict of interest, I don't want to enter into it. But Steve will know better, since he's been associated with it. But because of the associated, because of the less conflict of interest that brought the attorney in, so I don't want to comment on it.
I mean, I appreciate you. Let's have Steve have a stand.
Yeah, I think I heard somebody said it's already been paid, it's been paid.
It's been paid, but he wants to, he wants to be reimbursed, is what I see.
Well, he has no... The city's paid the attorneys, but the developer has not paid, he's got an outstanding bill.
Oh, I see, okay, yeah. He would like to, he's in his spot, before he, he wants to know if there is responsibility, okay, let's ask Steve. Okay. Boy, this is turning into a long meeting already.
I mean, we've got a long ways to go, too.
Yeah. Land use billing for subdivision, oh, we took care of that. Councilman Kingsbury got some information, I haven't seen this.
Yeah, the first one, goals and strategic planning. I've been meeting with David to see how it's going, and we as a council have to come up with goals and our strategic plan, how we want to, how we want to get there. So I've asked our fellow councilmen here, what, what do we want to do? Do we want to have another meeting, set up, set up some goals?
It would be a work session, or that's where we've done, when we've been able to get together to do it, I mean, um, is that a public meeting? I would say work session, which is open to the public, so we can hear questions back and forth and...
Because currently, you know, we've, up to now, we've had our head down. Our head down, kind of taking care of day-to-day stuff, at least I know I have. And I haven't been thinking one, three, five years out at all. I've been thinking thirty days out, and I think that now is the time, with David here taking care of our day-to-day operations, that it's now it's time for us to step up to the plate and look out one, three, five, maybe ten years out. What, what do we want this city to look like? And any input from the citizens would be great, it would be awesome to get that. We open for a work session, we can limit it to an hour.
I really think that.
I wouldn't limit it to an hour, because if you...
No, it's going to take...
Maybe it's going to be two to three hours.
Just a downwind, we should have some outline and things to discuss there. You know, have somebody that's not just give everybody's opinion on, on everything. We should have an outline to work on.
Well, I, David, yeah, I think, why? David did send me three city goals and strategic plans that I can send off, I can send it out today and see what you guys think. Yeah, Ray, you're right, we should have a general outline of what we want to talk about. But there is some, some, uh, some value in discussion, and kind of fleshing things out to come to the surface, on what, what it is that we want to, um, we want to...
And I think David could leave that, leave us in that with some, well, if you do that, or Cog does these goal-setting sessions?
No?
He sends some...
Sure.
And Jenny Mesmer has already volunteered and do that. I mean, they're, they're, I'd like to be the role person.
Jenny Mesmer, she was the one that came on, and of course...
But I'd be happy to work with her, you and I'd be role that, I mean, that's, that's what I've done for a long time, strategic planning. But they're professionals, and it depends on how, take me a role that you have. But I think it's important to do that, that's one of my primary responsibilities, is to see what your goals are implemented over time in the future.
And Councilor Kingsbury is correct, we've been, nothing, been able to do nothing but put out spot fires all over the place. And the last time there was a goal-setting session was five, six years ago. And, uh, it kind of was done at a council meeting, and it wasn't a big, you know, um, at that point. But it was just trying to get everything, but like, it was sick. We've been chasing all these, and now with the administrator, he's able to take some of that off, but also knows the day-to-day operations can help plan and help forecast.
All right, it's that work session.
Good. Are there two N's in there?
One, one and two S.
Okay, the next situation is the electronic locks installation council in the coffee.
And that's short, five seconds, I hand it over to David, and he'll make the call, and I'll work with him if he has any questions. Uh, we have a proposal somewhere in there, that he submitted. Uh, if you don't, I go back to him, he emails and finds it, so I'm just following up on that.
So where's that?
We're nowhere right now, we left it last year, that we budgeted, and then had the discussion this year about the installation.
Right.
So I have asked David, I gave him the contact information to call that person, and set up a meeting, and we'll discuss if there's any changes or modifications and the fourth, that scheduling.
Have we approved that?
Yeah. It was approved in the last budget.
It's approved in the...
But it wasn't approved by the council, was it?
It was put into the budget, and...
And we have not discussed it yet?
Revisited, so...
No, and then it's open, because I thought our discussion was, we'll put it in the budget and we'll plan it for next year. But we can go back and look at the meeting, but that's to clarify that, but I'm certainly open for discussion, it's fine with me.
Yeah, well, well, when it comes up, we'll discuss it.
Yeah, he'll have more information, I think, between now and our next meeting.
Okay, we're moving right on, I have nothing to report, Bob Brunn, which is sick, Julie Ditter, next.
Ari gave the report.
Ari gave it, Brian?
Uh, nothing.
Jim Kingsbury?
Um, we have, David, I think, is doing an excellent job, I've been meeting with him every week. He does, if any of the councilors wants to get in touch with him and get him up to speed on things that are going on in your area, that'd be good. School starts at Regis, uh, twenty-ninth of this month, and then it starts up here on, after Labor Day.
I've got a chance to meet with David over lunch, and, uh, we visited about several issues concerning the city. I am very pleased that we have David on board. I think it's the best move of council meeting, to me.
It was a hard fought battle.
I know it was, but I mean, it certainly, it's time we did it.
Yes.
Yeah, it's been a time, a few years ago, and, but, there, there was always the battle of, well, we don't need this, and two thousand. Close down now, so...
Hey, just one question, that's in your packet, was information Item C?
Yeah, I was just going to ask the mayor to overlook that. Item C was the late insert, and I started A and D.
Information Item C, I, I did overlook that.
The, um, here's what I'd like to do, again, with your permission and approval. I'll have probably the next year several items, some of them complicated, um, some of them perhaps more contentious, some of them just difficult, and maybe some of them none of those things. But what I, some of the best run meetings I've ever seen is with the governing body, whether it's school board, or city council, or the county commissioners, are not surprised by any items. And one way of doing that is to have an information item, no discussion, or just the most general discussion, with the intent of discussing these in more detail one month later. with the intent of discussing these in more detail one month later or at least at the next meeting. And so information item C is what I call addition to the city council agenda for today's date and personnel payroll and benefits. Those eight topics there are topics I've seen that are unresolved, need to be redefined, perhaps then need to be tossed out as being irrelevant, but I have all of them as question marks. And so the intent was just to point those out to you and then to go into more detail a month from now so that I get your guidance on some of them. For example, a handbook, I should have a direct written handbook. And if appropriate, and I believe that it is, ornaments that reflect the handbook as it should be. I've got issues on COLA, as you can see.
Can you, just hitting on that, so can you put in which ones are for this year and which ones, because the COLA, that train's already at the station. That train's gone. We start those discussions in March and we have several discussions on that. Whether it's in the budget or not, that train's already left. We don't talk COLA after the budget's approved. We talk COLA before that because we've had, we do work sessions. We take a number of things into account. It's not sneaking in the budget, and when we back out, it's not put in the budget. We approve the budget and then after the budget's approved, we come back and say, oh, but it is in the budget because there's a lengthy process that goes into COLA raises for employees. So that's great. I think that's a perfect conversation for next year. But for this year, it's done. That's when we didn't have that discussion before.
And that's fine. That's why I bring it up.
And I'll have the...
I don't...
That's absolutely true. It's absolutely true.
So, continue. I know this year, the reason I passed that on to David was because of the amount of stuff that was going on before and during that budget preparation. I did not have time to do the work on COLA. So that's the reason that I passed it on to David.
No, I think that's good for next year, but that's, you know, I mean, that's... Because my question is, I had those questions before that budget was approved and I think we had one of those discussions and it never came up. And we had those discussions again, like I said, it started in March as the budget preparations coming in, where the council sits down and considers all the factors. And I think, Jim, you were on that two years ago where we sat down, you know, when we talked COLA in a work session with all of us here.
Correct.
And, you know, what that entailed. Now, I mean, like I said, that window's already closed and there's been no recommendations to have that done and included in the budget. Whether it got in there or not.
Well, my... Well, the...
It's not in the budget after no salaries. The only two that were adjusted was, one was the city administrator and the other one was the utility billing clerk that went from part-time to full-time. Those were the only two positions that had any adjustments to salary or anything like that. If there was anyone else, stood across the board.
Because I know we, that was our big, as you know, kind of contentious thing last year. You know, where we found, but we had months that we kind of agonized and debated and discussed that and then allowed it to go into the budget. But it's not in the budget this year, so...
Correct. That first budget year, that was a learning experience for me. And I still say David should look at it.
Well, may I make a general comment? I mean, the budget, of course, is not cast in anything like concrete or stone. I mean, it's the best estimate generally generated in March or April. I've had budgets that seem pretty good, you know, as late as May and by July first, I wonder why they budgeted that way. Most of these items, I think, and that's why I'm asking, I don't know. I've probably been here three to six months. I'll know a great deal more, but right now I don't. Most of those issues there having to do with everything from Carroll to Allen to Jason to COLA and everything else, I don't fully understand. However, the fact that it is or is not in the budget is to me basically irrelevant. You can always pass a supplemental budget. For example, let's say we're gonna give ten thousand dollars more property tax that's gonna be estimated and we want to spend that. We pass a supplemental budget and that now takes the place of the budget. The budget is just the best estimate. And if there are things that haven't been done in the budget, and we'll see as we get through the reports, the probably thirty percent of our accounts will either exceed or fall well short in budget, which means we did the best we could to budget. But it doesn't mean that the budget is an absolute static instrument. As a matter of fact, it's a dynamic instrument that's changing month to month. So the fact that something's in or not, to me, doesn't make much difference. What is important, and once it's adopted, that particular item has then been approved for expenditures. So let's say we adopted a budget for ten thousand dollars for a piece of equipment. The moment the council adopts that budget, that expenditure is approved. It may or may not take place, however. If we find out that that budget and ten thousand dollars for that piece of equipment now costs fifteen thousand, we might just set aside a contingency for the one year and make sure that the five thousand was available for the next year. So I've never considered the budget to be a static instrument that absolutely defines the expenditures and revenues of the next year. As a matter of fact, they usually don't come close. It's a general guideline. These are things that have come up in the four weeks I've been here that I don't fully understand. And hopefully, four weeks from now, we'll be able to sit down and talk about some of them. And that's my feeling on the budget. I just don't think it prevents discussion and possible action on anything that the council thinks is appropriate.
And I agree with that, but here's the problem part of that. I agree, the budget is totally static. It moves. I mean, it fluctuates. You fall short, you go where... Problem is, and I'll give an example. Say you've got a water sewer pipe you're billing for a million dollars. You have no discussion of that cost or the effects of that cost. You approve a budget and then a month after the budget's approved, you go, oh, by the way, we've got a million dollar water sewer pipe that we need to find. I mean, you don't just go, okay, passed, approved, put the million in there. There's got to be, in the way we work, and I'm sure in your circumstances, and I don't disagree with any of the budget having to dictate or direct, but the way we've worked and the way it works for all, most budget items, you have a reasonable discussion over a period of time. That's why the budget preparation and planning, there's been no discussion on COLAs. And you're at a disadvantage because you weren't here. You don't know that. We've had zero discussion on COLAs this year. And so when, in the past, when we put our budgets together, when we get our information to budget people, the council has very lively discussions, whether it's appropriate, how we're gonna fund that, what the impacts are for next year with health care insurance rises and... And so if you go in and you say, now let's explore COLA, well, then now let's go back in and reopen the insurance. Let's go in and reopen the retirement and make adjustments so we need to reduce or eliminate those that pay for that. You know, I'm not arguing with, debating with you about the budget. We've had zero discussion on COLA as a council, whether to approve or not approve that.
Or where or what standard you should be using.
Absolutely. I mean, there's a... There's a number of early calls and...
That's why I passed it out to David so that he could look into that.
Yeah, for next year. I think that's an awesome idea.
We were told for the staff that it was gonna happen when he arrived. We were assuming that.
I don't know who told you that, but here...
Well, I sat in the budget meetings.
Well, they don't have the authority to make that decision. They don't have the authority to make those calls.
The discussion, you said, has never happened. It has happened.
This is the discussion that approves or disapproves. Not budget committees, not planning commissions, this group right here. Nobody else.
The council is a part of the budget committee. And if, correct me if I'm wrong, Jim, this is why we passed it to the city administrator to take it off your plate. We didn't have the evaluation.
That's great, but it's too late. The plate's already been put in the dishwasher and it's done. It's too late for this year. We have not budgeted it. We have not discussed it. It's too late. And I had these concerns before the budget was approved. Are they gonna do a COLA this year? Hasn't came up. Is it in the budget? Not in the budget. So the budget was passed and approved and it's over. So don't look like that. I'm not gonna sit in here.
I haven't.
By our bad demeanor and attitude. No, don't do that.
I was at all the budget meetings.
But you're not a part of the council who makes the decisions. You don't have that authority.
I was there during the discussion.
That's great. You can say whatever you want. It doesn't change what our responsibility is here. You can say you can what, ten percent? They can tell you they'll give you twenty percent. Only these people right here have the authority to give you that.
And those people are on the budget committee.
They never brought it to the council, so I can't answer for them. This is the first I've ever heard of it, the first. And I'm sorry that it got overlooked or got missed.
Well, I mean, we've gone two out of the last three years without a cost of living.
You got one last year.
We were told that we were...
You got one last year.
Correct. I just, it seems like it's a battle every year.
It is a battle every year because our budget's a battle every year. Every one of our expenses, police went up, garbage is going up, insurance is going up, retirement's going up.
All those things go up except the staff's wage. I mean, you certainly, you point out all the things that go up and it's the cost to the citizens and whatnot. I just have a concern and I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't represent the staff at Public Works and if not for the new employees, that we got our due diligence as far as looking at it. We were put aside. We were told that it was gonna be done later and now's later. And here we are another year.
Well, I don't agree with that and I'm not gonna sit here and argue because this isn't the...
Okay, let's put it in David's tab and we'll discuss it next.
Like...
This is one of the items that he's been looking to. He said it's a flexible budget.
But the budget's not the issue. The council has not had any input, has... This isn't one meeting in fifteen minutes, let's decide COLA cost of living. That's not the way we've always done this. The council has spent from March till July, and Gene can tell you, it's a lengthy process. It isn't just sit down and give them a cost of living because there's so many different impacts on that for this year and next year. So we'll let Gene talk.
Well, one of the problems that has always occurred is you have the other benefits and salary. And everybody just kept concentrating on salary one hundred percent. That's, and we had, we paid dearly for all these wage studies to be done. And the last one that came out was showing that everybody was right there, either above a hundred percent or just below a hundred percent.
To the median. Lot to the, I mean, the years of service, all that hasn't been taken into consideration.
No, when Cascade Employment did this last wage study survey, because it said in our book, five years and it had been seven years. So we, it was done. And for some odd reason, every time we do one of these, the first one comes out and now we don't like the way that one came out. Let's do another one. And so it was done a second time and it did not show anything because overall compensation, the whole package, insurance, retirement, all the benefits that go in there, you're on level with everybody else. It's not above, not below. And so when you, if there'd been a large increase in the cost of living and last report I got, and it's the one that the city of Silverton used, it's a half of point five percent, a half a percent is all it was. And so to justify one point seven...
So Silverton got the one point five this year.
I don't know what they gave them. All I know is that this is what it was, that when you look at...
And what I'm saying is, if they get a cost of living and we're right with everybody else, then next year, we're then now behind them because we didn't get a COLA.
Now, when you look at the overall package...
No, you just said that. You said we're even aligned, in the line with everybody else.
On your salaries, but when you look at the overall package, you're higher than everybody else. I mean, who else is getting...
Health insurance, nobody else has it.
Yeah, nobody's getting a hundred percent family paid health insurance.
May I make a comment? Why don't we just bring this up in a moment? And I have a couple of comments. I mean, we're talking about six employees only. I strongly recommend we pay no more salary schedule. I could pull up salary schedule off the websites and do it for free. It's simply to talk about an issue. Certainly when you're looking at twenty-eight hundred dollars in COLA, for example, that's covered by the fact that my budget for me is two thousand more a month than I, or a year than I'm making. All I wanna do is say, here are some situations. Maybe not very important, maybe. This is a good discussion, by the way. This is exactly what should happen. But if there are, in any organization, if the majority of the organization is what I call stepped out, they have no way to get increases on their existing salary schedule, then COLA is the only thing that they can get. Now, that might be just too bad and one of the things that might lead us into another area to say, okay, what often happens in organizations is we're not going to increase from seven steps to ten steps, fifteen steps, but we're gonna give seniority raises every three years or something like that. There's all kinds of places a discussion like this can profitably go for our employees. I just wanna bring it up and say, if we wanna do it and you're right, of course, the city councils are the ones who can decide that. But I think we need to look at all the signs of it, the expenses, the possible source resources to cover those things and whether it's health insurance or COLA or retirement or anything else. It's things that when I look at, and when I look at our expenses on a daily basis, I see things that in this case apparently haven't been answered, but that wasn't the impression that I had. I'd just like to bring it back to you and see if there's a discussion that goes anywhere. Now, we'll somehow make it next year.
Well, I would propose we do that in a work session because if you wanna start the process, because we're gonna do COLAs, we need to, we still have the insurance issue on the table and the benefits issue and if we're gonna cap that or how that's gonna look next year. So if you wanna start the process over again, which I think is fine. Last time it took us about three months. Maybe we can do it sooner. But I don't think it's appropriate to sit here and hash this out for an hour in council.
Work session.
And do that. And then, and you made a point and I just, then we'll move on. But this is the extent of these kind of decisions. You already said you're three percent over three thousand over your budget right position. Had I known that we were gonna have another one point seven five COLA raise on top of that, I probably would've had different discussions with council. But that's the extent. Those are the depth of decisions that were made and are being made that we just, you know, it seems like, again, this just came out of nowhere. It was nowhere in the budget process did I see it proposed like we've done every single year. And the suspicious nature of my being here now almost eight years, I asked one of the councillors, I said, they're not trying to sneak that in the budget, are they? And it was like, no, I haven't seen it. And sure enough, it didn't. And so I'm just a little suspicious on, the budget's approved, we're moving on. We've got bills to pay. We've got things to do. And then we got a COLA that's possibly coming back in the works. And you're at a huge disadvantage because you weren't there, so... But a work session would be great.
Okay. Jim, do you wanna try to arrange a work session in the next couple of weeks? Is available next couple of weeks?
If you leave out the schedule, yeah, I'm going to leave at the twenty-third.
And mine?
And mine is changing hourly, but if I've got a little league time and I got an idea, well, I'll be, I can just maybe cover it.
Evening, seven o'clock, three?
Six.
Six o'clock, then?
Six will be started earlier.
Good.
And that might do all your stuff, Dave, your payroll, your benefits, sort of all of that. That might take care of all that.
Okay, then. Well, I think you wish to do a adjourn.
I'm gonna motion that we adjourn here.
You got a question here?
One question, Ray. Do we have a new city attorney?
No. No, Steve had to take his car back for his daughter and Nick is just filling in tonight. He works in association with Steve.
I kinda looked at him and I thought, my gosh, he lost his hair.
I said, he's gonna be back next week, next month or whenever. Next week he'll be back. Thank you anyway, Nick. Okay, then move to the second adjourn. All in favor of saying bye?
Bye.